Politically certified of the United States of America and do the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this school board meeting of ISD 544 to order. Will you please take all these?
Yes. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knewtman.
Here.
Melanie Cole. Matthew Lenthke.
Here.
Missy Hermes present. Steven Biggessa.
Here.
We have a form.
Could I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or say nay? That is approved. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to the Otter PTO for their donation for books to Cleveland Elementary School. Someone offer that resolution report's adoption?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Missy will you take all?
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knewtman.
Yes.
Matthew Lenthke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. So we'll move into our reports tonight and we'll kick off with Derek Abrams, our activities director.
Hey. Well, good evening. We, I felt we had another very successful season, just like in the fall. Our winter activities, our between our numbers, our participation, the things that we were able to accomplish both on the fields or the courts or the ice or the pool, along with how we carried ourselves. It was a very positive season again. Couple highlights I'll hit on here and then mostly just answer questions. Again, our numbers, you hear me say this probably every time I'm up here, but every time I go to an AD meeting, whether it's the CLC or the region, one of the topics always seems to be the declining numbers. And for us, we have avoided that to this point. Where our numbers are right where they kind of need to be. We haven't had any sport that's really where it's, we're getting kind of worried about, you know, what's coming up. Our youth numbers, middle school numbers are strong too. You know, we had about 15 total less kids in winter activities this winter with 326 versus 341. But again, we're higher than we were in 2021, 21, 22. So our numbers keep going up there and then some of them, we're kind of maxed out on what we can even do. You look at something like hockey, where we have two teams without the ability to add any more teams to that. Once you hit 30, that's kind of, you know, 30, 31, that's where you're at. At where we even have fit sitting a lot. So, so really we're sitting in good shape. Nordic ski is continues to take off, both boys and girls, both successfully, you know, on, as they're going, but our numbers as well. And, and everything else, like I said, we're seeing a rebound in our activities as well, whether it's knowledge bowl, math league, one act play, speech, maintaining, and then great, and much better numbers coming up now from our middle school. And the success is back there again with, we didn't have anybody, for example, speech. We didn't have anybody qualify for state. But they did real well in the CLC and they did really well at sections. So it's that next step now getting them to qualify for state and things like that. And I know they're even planning a trip down there as a team, going on with their coaches to see the state tournament. So as a goal for them and they're pretty young. So very excited about those things where if you remember in past meetings, I've been, you know, a little worried about some of those, those got hit harder than even our sports did with COVID a couple of years ago. But those seem to be rebombing. You can see some of the other things, almost weekly, we have performers of the week in our various sports, which we have always on our social media, but everything is also located on the CLC website. You look up Central Lakes Conference website, you can find all the all conference and honorable mentions, sportsmanship, performers of the week standings, all of that is on there. Again, winter CLC sportsmanship awards, I think it was last fall where I announced that even though we were the second or the time, the newest team in the CLC, we've now taken over the lead on number of sportsmanship awards, which again is a credit to all of our coaches and our programs because it varies throughout. This, this winter alone, we had five. Boys, both boys Nordic ski and girls Nordic ski, boys swimming and diving, wrestling and girls hockey. And again, especially boys swimming and diving and wrestling had successful seasons, but you look at boys Nordic ski, girls Nordic ski and girls hockey, there's your state tournament teams and finishing on the top half of the CLC and still getting voted sportsmanship. For those that still think sportsmanship is just a award they give to whoever got in last place. That's not the case at all. So again, very proud of those teams that got that. State tournaments, we did have two teams qualify for the state tournament this winter with our boys Nordic ski team and girls hockey. And we also had gymnasts, Nordic skiers, swimmers, also all qualify individually for the state tournament. A couple of other strong finishes that didn't quite make it to state. One act play did an absolutely phenomenal job. They got second place in our subsection out of six teams, which means that they got to go on to sections. There are six teams there, we finished third, but for anybody, if you don't know this, when they score, the low score wins and they'll rate it one, two, three, four, five, six, or actually this is not the five. So one, two, three, four, five for your six teams, you get rated. So the best score is a three, if every judge rates you as number one. Well, when you look at the top three teams, everybody got at least one, one or a two or a three. And we got, ours went one, three, three. There was another school that went one, two, two, and another one that went one, two, three. So we end up in third place, but there was at least one judge there that thought we were the best play. And so we were right there. It was so close, just came down to, you know, one, one judge, such as that three to a one or even a two and, and we're going to state. So they did a great job. Girls basketball made it to the section finals and they lost to Alexandria to go to state. So again, very successful. We are kicking off spring sports. Boys tennis had a match today and they had one last week. We've already had three track meets, including an outdoor one. Tomorrow we'll have another outdoor track meet. Girls golf gets going tomorrow outside. Everybody should be practicing hopefully outside tomorrow. And everybody I think except for boys golf will have a game or a meet or a match in outside by the end of this week, which is a month ahead of last year. So we're very happy about that. Questions for me?
So Derek, I look at all the first page, the participation, and I see just about every activity is, is doing well, but it seems like gymnastics is the only one that's really down. Anything you can contribute to?
That one is just in the age groups, we had a little bubble that came through and that's why that was up. And it was, it was our younger, the two-year gap of our seventh and eighth grade.
Okay.
We didn't have as many, I know we have more when talking to them about that fourth. So that's the next place I look, okay, where we at fourth to sixth grade to fill in. And we were very young, we only have one senior on that team. And we've graduated a number of seniors the past couple of years, but we only have one senior on that team. So we have 16 returning and some, some good numbers.
Should be back up next year.
We ebb and flow, it becomes more obvious when it's a thing like gymnastics again, where you have around 20 to 25 or a thing like that, if you have a little gap in there. If a volleyball team takes a little bit of hit, we go from 68 players down to 52, you hardly notice that because it's such a big number.
Sure.
It's good questions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any of this or questions of things that maybe aren't on here that I could talk about a little bit?
Thank you. Then we'll move on to Kirby Anderson, who's 544 Education Foundation Finance and Activities.
Yes, 544 Education Foundation did not meet in March. There is a meeting scheduled for this coming Thursday at noon. Finance committee, we met on Jan, or March 29th. And we basically went through revenue assumptions, expenditure assumptions, and we reviewed all of the proposed budget adjustments. And I think that's in our, results of that is going to be in our new business agenda, item number one. So I'll just leave that one there for now. And activities, we did meet this morning and talked about the logo and logo standards. Talked about various options for what we want the gym floor, when it's repainted to look like. The middle school acceleration for some of the, some of the athletes to move up into the, into the high school and various sports and other activities. Senior banners and changes for, possible changes, we just reviewed some of the, the activities that we charge feet for and the ones that we don't and the reasons why. And just a little bit more about robotics. So nothing major, no major decisions. I think the, the, spent the bulk of our time talking about the logo and logo standards because there's, there's a lot, lot going on there with trademarking and with who uses it and how they're going to use it properly. And so I think we ironed out some of those things and then I think it'll be exciting when the gym floors is repainted and I think it'll look nice. That was, that's my report and ask just questions.
Any questions for Kirby? All right, thanks. Let's skip over Melanie's report tonight and we'll move on to Missy Hermes.
Okay, the policy committee has not met. There's a lot going on in the legislature right now and I'm sure that when that, they're, they've taken a break right now, will be coming back and so probably at the end of May, we'll be meeting again. The district curriculum review advisory committee met on March 18th. And the report for March covered the reading and math services, response to intervention or RTI and Title I. And curriculum director Amelia Lamar and our new Title I coordinator Courtney Anderson, who was the ELO coordinator or teacher, was, were the two people that reported to our group. Now Court, and actually it was nice that Courtney was reporting because there's a little bit of crossover from ELL and RTI and Title I. So, and once again, I have to say, I was really appreciative of the way that, since I'm new on this committee, that Amelia has sequentially planned and scheduled the different reports because they really, the information that she is being presented builds upon what was previously learned. It's been very, very helpful. So again, response interventions, RTI. And regarding reading, the educators reported on how teams of certified staff in the classroom and para professionals both work with small groups of children. And in K through two, they're using things that, that reading curriculum that we've talked about before, UFLI or the University of Florida, the Dersie Institute and Hagerdy curriculum. And then also something called learning without tiers for building phonemic awareness, oral vocabulary, phonics and reading. And with math, they're using bridges intervention. And in grade seven and eight, RTI intervention teams are using the STAR math and re, and reading. One member of the committee kind of expressed a concern that there might be a stigma for students that are receiving some of these interventions. And, and I can remember that myself growing up and even having a student of my own who was receiving services. But what the teachers said is that in fact, today, children seem to have moved beyond that and enjoy working in small groups and also getting one-on-one or small group attention from an educator feeling successful and positive about the work that they're doing. We also saw demonstration, the DIBL's assessments that are used for reading and, which is just a short minute, one-minute test, because I was concerned about so many tests and these, it was really doable. And the correct, the curriculum director, let's see, get, is given a lot of data on really honing in on the interventions that will help each student by using some of these tests. And really, one of the most eye-opening parts of that whole presentation by Amelia came when she revealed how many students have been so successful with this RTI and the UFLI or UFLI and the, the Hagerdy program, that they've been able to actually exit the program already this year. And she's, I wrote down, just this is for third grade, in 2023, 20 children, just a total throughout the year, were able to exit RTI. And this year so far, already 35 students have exited with potential for six more to join them before then, by the end of the year. That's great. And then one of the other questions, I just have to add this, one of the other questions that was asked by a member of that committee was how is RTI and Title I, how are those things funded? By federal, state dollars? And yay, Mr. Drake jumped right in. This was his opportunity to talk about the special education cross subsidy and how that funding is not there and how it comes out of our budget. And not that that's a bad thing, but that the government is not covering the cross subsidy or special ed like they should. So good time for anybody out there who wants to contact your legislator and remind them that we need to close the gap on the special education cross subsidy.
Any questions for Missy?
I typed it all up as soon as I got home, so I wouldn't forget.
Any questions?
This time.
All right, my report is next. Wellness doesn't need now until next school year, next September, so I have nothing to report there. Policy, like Missy said, we'll probably be meeting in the next month to go over some new policies. And then building, buildings and grounds, nothing super pertinent right now. However, the board and some of the kindergarten teachers and staff were able to do a tour last Wednesday out at Lincoln School. And it was really awesome to just see that space come, coming together and be able to see the size of all the classrooms and all the natural light and just the learning environment altogether. It's going to be totally worth all the ups and downs that that project has had. But it would be, be a really great learning environment and a great model now too, as we go into our referendum in May. So.
Move on to Matt Lenthke then, with Minnesota State High School League.
Yeah, Minnesota High School League met on April 4th and just going to highlight just a couple of things. First one is that the, the board itself adopted for, to explore, to basically form a task force to look at ninth grade and seeing if that should become, go under the umbrella of the Minnesota High School League. Right now, ninth grade is kind of separate from them. And so they formed a task force to explore this and to see the steps that would take to, to do that going forward. The other thing that they talked about, which does not affect Fergus Falls, but is, but has been talked about a lot is just boys volleyball. And they adopted, they're ruling to approve the season for 24, 25, so next year. Season will begin May, March 17th with the state tournament being held June 9th through 13th. Oh, excuse me, this year, I apologize, 24th. And with only, but they're having as one, one class. So just because based on the number of teams. So they're only having one class of boys volleyball, but that is starting, so.
It's just the metro?
Yeah, pretty much the metro. There might be a few, is there a few off state?
In the CLC, but there could be, but not in our conference or anything, St. Cloud or anything like that.
So that's just something that's just again, began to start now for a spring sport, so. And the other things that were just for proposals that were made from different subgroups in the Minnesota High School League, nothing was adopted, so that's kind of all I have for report.
Any questions for Matt? All right, then we'll move on to Steve Biggessa, with staff development.
All right, so it was a small group that met the last week, I think it was. So there wasn't a lot discussed. We talked about term limits and is it necessary to have term limits on this, on this committee? And I don't know, there wasn't really much of a consensus on that because they, I think, I think Krista felt kind of uncomfortable making decisions with so many people gone, as well as the students gone. I can't remember what, what were they gone for, it was just the end of quarter stuff or I don't remember exactly. But anyway, so we talked a little bit about the next staff development days, where they're going to be on the 17th of January and February 28th. There, there is some more cultural competency requirements requiring a four-hour, four hours of training. And what they've been previously doing is adding, is adding a cultural competency course, like a two-hour course every other year or something like that. And they talked about having that every, every time. So we've got new staff that come in, so they don't have to cram in that cultural competency requirement all in one or have to go outside of the district to get that training. There wasn't really much to that, to that meeting. The next meeting is May 6th, it's the last meeting of the year. It's about $11,284 remaining in the budget. And if there's any summer requests, it just needs to be in before May, May 6th. So I don't know if I missed anything, not really. So, and that's about it.
Any questions for Steve? All right, then we'll move on to Superintendent Drake.
Good evening. First, some thank yous. Last week was Assistant Principals Recognition Week. And thank them for all the work that they do in support of our students and families. We also had a happy, wished a happy Para Professional Appreciation Day to our support staff. That was on April 3rd. Appreciate all the work that they do. And on April 4th, it was School Librarian Day. So busy week with school recognitions and again, my thanks to the dedication and hard work of all the people that serve in those capacities. I want to go through, these are the Golden Loon Awards. This is the second annual Golden Loon Awards. And this is sponsored by our local newspaper, the Daily Journal. And we, it's a regional competition, but our Fergus Falls Otters really had a very nice showing in the Golden Loons. So I want to congratulate Jackson, Elena, 30, and Eden for their awards. These are all Best of Show in various artistic categories, as well as Ava, Elise, Coley, and Cadence. All received Best of Show from various categories for the Golden Loons. So a great showing by our students and congratulations to them. The last day of school has changed a little bit with the one snow day. So that will now be May 23rd with a three-hour early release. And knock on wood, I, I'm hoping we can put snow days to rest for the remainder of this school year. We were very fortunate, was a wonderful year weather-wise. But I will get a communication out to the families this week so that they can make plans for the little bit early out that we have from the original school calendar. District goals, this is an update. We had seven goals this year. Otter preschool students will meet all kindergarten readiness goals and we have some percentages there for our targets. Our strategies were to develop common definitions or rubrics for kindergarten readiness goals between preschool and our kindergarten staff. Increase communication between preschool and kindergarten teachers. And then this is really going to be advantageous for us, starting next year, when we have both programs housed in the same building. The amount of collaboration that will take place and communication about student strengths and areas where they have room for growth should really be ideal moving forward. And then our measurement, one of the challenges with some of our goals is that we don't get the measurements until the next school year. So we'll take a look and see how we did next fall when, in September and early October, the kindergarten teachers go through and they do their individual assessments with the students on their kindergarten readiness. Goal number two, achieving grade level literacy with all third grade students. The first two goals really tie into the world's best workforce report that we complete every year for the state with some target amounts. Missy mentioned some of these strategies earlier with the DACRAC report, but the UFLI reading curriculum is fully implemented this year in our lower grade levels. We also have full implementation of the Hagerdy reading curriculum this year. And both have been, I think, basically universally embraced by our teachers as being very effective strategies and we're seeing good results. We did a major revamp of our MTSS model, so multi-tiered systems of support, where we expanded our ADSIS program, which is a tier-two intervention to include kindergarten. And then we will have the REAT to be in compliance of beginning next fall. That's going to require some additional training on reading instructions from our staff. That will also include preschool, by the way. So that will feed into those kindergarten readiness goals that we mentioned earlier with MCA scores in the spring of '24 and other diagnostic assessments being our major measurement tools on those goals. Goal three, provide authentic learning experiences at all grade levels that require students to ask questions, analyze current complex real-world issues and to construct and present solutions. So our main strategy here is the project-based learning work that's been going on. This is year two. One unit is required for all students, or teachers, excuse me, in our district. And the measurement will be a record of the PBL units listed by teacher. And Amelia Lamar is putting that work together. Goal number four, develop well-balanced citizens through character education that creates a safe, healthy and optimistic space to learn and place to learn and grow. So strategies, K through two, this is the first year of adoption for the Love and Logic curriculum. This is the first year in the middle school of the second step curriculum and that's being implemented. And then first year in nine through 12 with the Otter time and the developmental guidance lessons that focus on life, career, and college readiness. And our measurement is a demonstration of implementation of those, those programs. Goal number five, district will see improved student attendance. So this is the continued support of the work of the attendance clerk, tracking student absences, sending notifications to families, but also county, required county notifications and working with the county attorney's office on the camp programs and some of the diversion programs for students that may be following down the wrong path. Student recognition and awards for excellent attendance, continued emphasis on the importance of daily school attendance as messaging. And then the building principles following up with students and/or families for students that are examining attendance concerns. And the measurement is building level attendance reports and summaries at each of our building levels. Goal number six, create adaptable learning environments that are responsive to enrollment trends, developmental needs, curricular programming, and 21st century instructional practices. So that we have two major pieces going on right now. The first one is the completion of Lincoln Phase Two. And that's really going to be a remarkable educational facility there. The STEM area or project-based learning area there is, is huge. It's a wonderful place for students to do collaborative learning, to practice and develop their creativity and their higher-order thinking skills. So I'm really excited to see those spaces being put to good use. And then on May 14th, the community will have an opportunity to weigh in on a proposed new third through fifth grade school to accommodate modern instructional practices with an emphasis on environmental science and again, those higher-order critical thinking skills. So the measurement will be the completion of Lincoln Phase Two, currently targeted at occupancy of July 1st, 2024. And then the building bond results coming up on May 14th. And then our last district goal is to increase opportunities for staff engagement with administration. So the building level principals would typically have a monthly meeting with staff, both at the middle school and high school. They also have building level leadership teams that they are actively involved with. I meet periodically at each of the buildings to give updates and provide an opportunity for questions and answers. We also, I do this virtually from time to time. One of those will be tomorrow at 3:30. I have begun individual meetings with staff and that will continue. These are some things I've really found enjoyable. Uh, that will take, I'm guessing, with the number of employees we have, uh, could be a three-year process to, uh, get all of those in, so. And then there are a couple of things that we just do on the informational side. Um, I, I do Otter Observations Communication as well as Superintendent Columns that are, uh, dispersed to the staff and then also, um, our families. And measurement is demonstration that opportunities were provided. Uh, the new school calendar is, has been publicized now, so that has been developed, and families can, uh, look ahead at that and make, uh, plans accordingly. Uh, we do have the special election coming up on May 14th, and I want to highlight, uh, several opportunities for, uh, public forum. Uh, the first one will be this Friday at 8:00 AM. All of them will take place in the Roosevelt Education Center in the Community Ed area. Uh, but the first one will be at 8:00 AM this Friday morning, and then the following Tuesday at 6:30 PM. And the following Tuesday after that, April 23rd, again, at 6:30 PM. Uh, we will get those dates, um, they've been publicized in the journal article, we'll get those on the, uh, district website. But looking forward to the opportunity to provide some information to the public and answer any questions that are out there on the building bond. Uh, voting information, uh, there'll be four voting places, Fergus Falls Public Library, uh, the YMCA, Minnesota State College, uh, Community Technical College, and the Bigwood Event Center, so that will be, uh, present on May 14th. Depending on which precinct that you are registered in, those are your voting options. And then we also have absentee, uh, ballot going on, and that's, uh, current. Uh, so people that want to swing by the district office and do an absentee ballot, uh, can certainly, uh, come and do that at, uh, at their convenience between 7:00 AM and eight, um, excuse me, between 8:00, 8:00 AM and 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake? Thank you. Thanks for the update. Okay, we'll move on to our general consent items then. We have the minutes from the March 26th, 2024 Board meeting, and then the bills and treasures report.
Yes, I'll start with the, uh, treasure report. Uh, Matt came in early and we met with Renee. Um, our, our fund balance currently with, uh, without the construction fund included is, uh, currently about, uh, just over 18 million. We're about two and a half million over a year ago. Um, there are a couple of things that, um, haven't been taken out of yet. We've got about $3.2 million coming out in, in June that comes out annually. But, uh, we have about just over $1.2 million in LTFM, um, projects that are budgeted to be paid off out of that fund as well, so. So overall, um, um, the, uh, the fund balance is in good shape. Community Ed has been running a negative for a while. We did infuse, um, a quarter of a million dollars to that fund, and they are currently, uh, at 277, so that's, uh, that's a good sign. Food Service continues to, uh, to do well as, as well. On the, uh, on the bills, uh, we went through all of the invoices that are being approved for tonight. Lots, lots of Amazon things. Again, uh, um, just want to highlight, I'm seeing a lot of zeros on the shipping charges, but just, uh, want to make a reminder to, uh, anybody who's using Amazon to, uh, to check the, uh, the, the, the free shipping if they can, if they don't need it ASAP. I know there's getting even more and more vendors that are not, um, providing free shipping anymore, a sign of the times, I guess. But, uh, it's, it's good to see that, uh, we're taking advantage of the free shipping as often as we can. Got a couple of, uh, snow removal for three or $4,000 this year for two different contractors, so hopefully that's the, uh, end of that. We did put in, uh, just over eight, just over $60,000 to, uh, for the active panels. I think 13 of them are going out to Lincoln. And 10 of them are, are going in, uh, for curriculum in, in the, uh, rest of the district. We have, uh, $5,200 went to a two-door-reaching cooler down in Food Services. And we did have a $5,100 grant that paid for 95% of that from the state, so that was kind of nice. We, uh, approved the, the painting, just under $4,000 for painting of the middle school weight room. Uh, we're starting to see some things go through, um, with the new logo, so that's a good sign. We had $7,200 that we bought a roof ladder for, at Lincoln. That's actually going, that's the only, um, construction-related, uh, payment this month. And we were able to secure that ladder for a little bit cheaper than, than what it would have been if it had gone through the normal channels, so that was good. And finally, uh, we had, uh, $400 to, uh, check out the elevator. So overall, um, no construction, uh, bills this month. Uh, we do have a, a meeting, I guess, this Wednesday to go through the, a draw meeting to see which, which bills we'll have to pay for, uh, for construction at Lincoln. And, uh, the rest of it was a pretty, mostly just, uh, things that we see, generic things that we see every month, so. Any, any questions or comments? Thanks to Matt for coming in early, and thanks to Renee for having things in order as usual.
All right, thank you. And move on to Elaine or Krista.
Good evening, everyone. I have a shorter report than normal, so that's a good thing. Support staff hires, Melissa Rasta, uh, Long-Term Substitute Special Education Paraprofessional at McKinley. And Marlene Anderson, a new supervisor at Kennedy also. And, uh, Marlene has been long-term subject for us for a long period of time, so it's good to see that we have her hired on, um, to come into our building every day. Support staff resignations, Jennifer Enders, she's a special education paraprofessional. And then Thomas Hagee is a par educator, um, at Red Adams. And then certified staff hire, Myrna Manosa. This past year, Myrna has been a reading interventionist at elementary schools. And she has accepted a position as a ESL, English Secondary Language Teacher for our, for the, um, next fall, for the 24-25 school year. So I, um, then the last thing is a letter of intent to negotiate for the 24-26 school years, um, from our Fergus Falls Parrot Educators Association. So I would recommend these four to approve.
Can I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those consent items are approved. Um, we don't have any old business, so we'll move on to new business. We have a resolution discontinuing and reducing educational positions and programs. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District 544 adopted a resolution on January 22nd, 2024, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and position, positions. And whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the School Board, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 544 as follows, that the following programs and positions or portions thereof be discontinued. Um, this is district-wide and including IQ Academy. So there's a variety of different positions listed here, um, between elementary, middle school, high school, IQ Academy. And then a couple of support staff positions. So I will leave that to the notes if you'd like to go and, um, check those out a little more detailed. Could someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
A second?
I'll second that.
Um, Missy, will you take role, please?
Yes. Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vegas.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to a resolution appointing election judges for the May 14th, 2024 School District Special Election. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 544, State of Minnesota, as follows. The individuals specified on exhibit A attached here to each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge are hereby appointed as judges of election for the School District Special Election on May 14th, 2024, to act as such at the combined polling places listed on said exhibit. The election judges shall act as clerks of election, count the ballots cast, and submit their results to the School Board for campuses in the manner provided for other school district elections. The School District Clerk and the clerks designated are hereby authorized to appoint additional election judges as needed to fill vacancies that may occur on or before Election Day. Could someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Need a second?
A second.
Missy, will you take role, please?
Yes. Steven Vegas.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thanks. Then we will move on to revisions to the 2023-24 School District Calendar that Superintendent Drake spoke about. Uh, May 20th, May 23rd, 2024 is changed to a three-hour early out for students and the last day of school. Nine, 10-month certified support staff will make up one contract day from March 25th, 2024, snow day closure. That will be served following their original last workday for the 2023-24 school year. Can I get a motion to approve that revision?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That revision is approved. Then we'll move on, um, to the Chief, Chief Boiler Engineer License Agreement between Wade Navy, Navy, and ISD 544 Fergus Falls Public Schools, effective April 1st, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
So, um, just the, both of it is that we'll have, um, this independent contractor come in routinely and, um, service.
It's just temporarily, like, for maybe three months until just one of our staff members gets their certification.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a certification, but the person just recently resigned, and so we're just temporarily without that license.
Okay.
Yes, $400, $400 a month.
Routine or as needed?
I believe once a month he'll come and check on things.
All right, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That agreement is approved. Then we'll move into clients, the Client Service Agreement between USI Insurance Services LLC and ISD 544 Public Schools, effective May 1st, 2024.
So moved.
I'm sorry, can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That agreement is approved. Um, that's the end of our meeting today or tonight. Our next regular School Board meeting is Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 5:15 here in the Otter Community Room. Um, our work session tonight will be talking about e-learning and some conversation on facilities. Do I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.